August 27th, 2018. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Treer?
Here.
Dr. Davidson, Abilis?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Abilis?
Here.
Would you please join me in saying of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business on our agenda for tonight is announcements. Any board members have announcements? Ms. Ross.
Mid-State Manual Academy Scholarships. Eight Manual students have been selected by Mid-State College to receive full scholarships for a dual-credit medical billing and coding diploma. The students will graduate in two years with a highly marketable skill. Students in the program study autonomy, anatomy, I'm sorry, anatomy, psychology, medical terminology, and master medical coding and billing software. In addition to the diploma, the training prepares them to take a certified coding associate, which is the CCA exam administered by the American Health Information Management Association to demonstrate competency in medical coding. If students continue their studies in health information field, they will be able to transfer all of their credits toward an associate or a bachelor's degree at Mid-State College or three other partner institutions in Illinois.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson.
Alignment Peoria. Alignment Peoria extends an invitation to participate to Peoria Area Professionals for a kindergarten through grade five career awareness pilot. This program will require a one-time 60-to-90-minute volunteer commitment. Alignment Peoria is particularly seeking professionals representing emergency services, agriculture, business and entrepreneurship, media and communications, health and fitness, natural resources, government, IT and programming, manufacturing, medical fields, engineering, and education and training. To learn more, please visit www dot alignmentpeoria dot com. www dot alignmentpeoria dot com.
Mr. Walter.
The 21st Century Community Learning Center Program is designed to improve student achievement and social development. This after-school program will be three hours after school every Monday through Thursday and will incorporate project-based learnings, athletics, and the arts. The 21st Century Community Learning Center Program will start on September 17th at three schools. Treewind Primary for grades two through six, Glen Oak Community Learning Center for grades three through eight, and Manual Academy for grades seven through 12. Transportation is provided. More information and registration forms are available in the offices at Treewind, Glen Oak, and Manual.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
The PNC First Grant Program provides teachers up to $1,000 to develop and implement a creative education project that aligns to student learning objectives. Funding priorities for these grants include improving and enhancing a classroom's academic environment and encouraging creative and interdisciplinary experiences for students. PNC First Grant applications are being accepted now and must be submitted by October 1st. To learn more about the grant and how to apply, email Samantha Conrad at Samantha dot Conrad at PNC dot com.
Thank you. Ms. Treer.
Reminder that this coming weekend Labor Day is a three-day weekend. There is no school and offices will be closed on Monday, September 3rd. Peoria Public Schools will resume their regular schedules on Tuesday, September 4th and dismiss at regular times. High schools will dismiss one hour earlier each Wednesday. This year, provide teachers extra planning and professional development opportunities.
Dr. Davidson, Abilis?
Buenas tardes. Bienvenidos. Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. Reserva la fecha. Save the date. Da bienvenidos de otoño por asistir la primera universidad de padres del año, el 27 de septiembre, en Tanner's Orchard in la ruta 40. No se pierda esta noche de fantástica diversión familiar. Welcome autumn at the first parent university of the year. Welcome autumn at the first parent university of the year, which will be on Thursday, September 27th, at Tanner's Orchard on Illinois Route 40. Don't miss this evening of fantastic family fun with tractor-drawn wagon rides, a corn maze, and the back 40 fun acres, including a jumping jack pad, miniature golf, and much more. Watch upcoming issues of Remarkable Times, the district website, and school newsletters for more details.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, you got off the hook tonight?
Yes.
Nice. All right. The next item on our agenda is a Community Contribution Award. Tonight, we welcome back our former Director of Communications and Community Engagement, Chris Copeland, to present our Community Contribution Award to retired and beloved Journal Star reporter Pam Adams. Pam Adams, a graduate of Manual High School, has covered nearly every beat possible at the Journal Star, and for the past five years, she has covered the education beat, which included spending a great deal of time with us here on Monday nights, reporting the news for the Journal Star. We'd like to recognize that Pam was awarded the Best School Board Coverage by the Illinois Press Association back in June. So I think Chris has some more words to take it away.
Thank you, President Adler, and board members, and Dr. Karat. It's great to see you. I can't believe it's been four months already since I stepped out of my role here, and I thought it would be a bit longer before I returned for a board meeting, which I'm sure Pam agrees with that as well. But I'm so excited to come back and share my appreciation, as well as the district's appreciation, for Pam's coverage of our school board meetings and our school events. Pam has been an excellent mentor to me throughout her time here. I started 10 years ago with Dave Haney as our education reporter, had a couple more short-lived reporters, and then Pam came onboard. I think it was her at least second round for the education beat, and finished out her career covering the school board meetings and education beat, as well as healthcare and, I think, and many other beats that she held during the end of her career here. But one thing I always appreciated about Pam that I don't know about anybody else is that I, and I still disbelieve it to some extent to this day, that she does not carry a cellphone. And, but needless to say, when I needed to reach her, I could always do that, and she was, almost every time I tried to call her at the office, she was at the, at her desk and available, and just building a great relationship with her. We had lunch frequently just to kind of, to build our relationship and to share what was going on, both within the district and what she was covering, and so it just became a great relationship with her. I've learned so much from her. I grew, I read her columns as I was growing up, and so it was great to be able to work with her as the education reporter at the Journal Star. But she always called and wanted to know what was going on, and this is, I've heard this, what can you tell me about this? And was just always very professional in asking questions and getting to know the district. And that's something that I hope that people in this community will take note of and appreciate the journalism qualities that our longtime reporters in this community have to offer. It takes relationships to report news accurately and be advocates for people, and I think Pam has done an excellent job of that as a graduate of our district and as a, has had family members, most recently, I believe, helping her niece through the school system, just always being an advocate and asking questions and trying to get answers for our community and help explain what is going on. So with that, I would invite Pam up to make a few comments and just let her know that I really appreciate the time that I got to spend working with her and hope that she enjoys her retirement.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I didn't, Chris was right, I didn't expect to be back here this soon. And he also didn't mention that some of those lunches were to repair our relationship. And, you know, there were things we had to work out, but, you know, I just, my vision is I'll always be straight with you if you're always straight with me, so it kind of worked out. I'd like to thank you for this, and I'd like to accept it on behalf of myself and the many other reporters that have covered education and tried to make sense of what was going on in this school district. I always, there are something like 40 school districts in the tri-county area, and my goal, which I didn't quite meet, was to make it to every school at least once, because that helped give me some perception of what was going, and how to compare what was going on in this district compared to what was going on in other districts, to see the similarities and the differences. And I'm sure every other reporter who's covered education before me has had that same goal in mind. But, and all that said, like I said, I'd like to accept it on behalf of me, but also all those other reporters. Ed Hammond, who is not here, probably covered education longer than anybody. He worked for a local radio station. Elaine Hopkins, who covered it for the Journal Star, is typically here still, even though she's retired. Oh, okay, okay. Mike Bailey covered it and kind of sets the standard, I think, for how we cover education at the Journal Star now. He is a former editorial page editor. And I can't tell you the hours over the years we spent arguing and debating and discussing what, and trying to figure out what's going on in the district and the best way to cover it. So I appreciate everybody who's ever called me back. And I appreciate everybody who's helped me try to figure out what's going on, from the reporters to the staff, to board members. Thank you.
Pam, on behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karat has a little token of our appreciation.
I will keep this. Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. I'll be back.
This is yours also. One of the things I really respected about Ms. Pam is she didn't get it right all the time, from my perspective, most of the times, but you always did your due diligence. You did your research. You spoke with many, many individuals, and we just really appreciated you for all the, you know, your commitment to not only Peoria Public Schools, but education and getting the information out to the public. And thank you so much for Thomas. She's mentoring her replacement, and he's, we're already impressed with him, and we love him, and we have actually accepted him and taken him under our wings. And he loves you also, so thank you so much.
I love you, Thomas. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Nice to see you, Chris.
We love you, Chris.
I'll just take a moment to make a small editorial comment. Well, we as board members may often get asked really tough questions that might not be easy to answer in the moment. I think we all share an appreciation for the role that local media plays in disseminating information to our citizens or taxpayers. And, I don't know, at some upper levels of government at this point, you see a lot of animosity towards the press. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of us for doing your job, even in times when you challenge us and push us to be better. Next up, we have a Remarkable Spirit Award.
Dr. Saffabell? Dr. Bell, are you presenting?
I've got it right up. Yep. So our Remarkable Spirit Award this evening goes to Calvin Coolidge Middle School Science Teacher Julie Craighead. So Mrs. Craighead has been instrumental in bringing Calvin Coolidge and other Peoria Public School middle school students to several outstanding STEM camps this year, including the six-week Saturday Detroit Area Pre-Collage Engineering Program and a two-week summer STEM camp at Bradley. At Calvin Coolidge, Craighead has created a maker space for Calvin Coolidge students. And at this time, like Principal Mick Swanson to step to the podium and help us permit, present the Remarkable Spirit Award.
Thank you, President Adler. Dr. Karat and board, I really appreciate the opportunity to come up here and talk about Ms. Craighead, as well as Dr. Bell. I brought six pages, a wonderful thing she's done. All right. I'd like to start by saying something about my whole staff in general. I have a great opportunity to work with wonderful people. As you see, there's many people here. They are a team, they are a family, they collaborate, and when somebody's down, they bring them up. It is an amazing group of people, and Julie sticks out today, and she is a fine example of what we're talking about. Julie has championed our STEM program and anything else we've asked her to do at Calvin Coolidge over the last few years. She takes it upon herself to advertise STEM opportunities and recruit and encourage and sometimes coerce students into going to things they needed to. Every weekend, Dr. Bell was working with Julie and myself to get kids there, and every weekend, every Saturday, I think there were six sessions at Bradley, we had 20 to 25 students there, and that wasn't because anything I did, it was because of what Julie did. She encouraged other students to attend camps during the summer that were for computer programming and gaming and creating games. She got our students there. She also took the time to work with the Jump Simulation Center and their mini-medical camp or school in the summer, and we had two students there on my board in my office. I've got a student holding a brain, and the picture she's taken, and she stayed in communication with Julie about this and just had an amazing time. Julie just, if you ask her to do something, she goes in 110 and 90 miles an hour. Sometimes you got to pull her back or get out of the way, one of the two, but she is a fine example of what everybody at Calvin Coolidge does, and I'm very proud to be up here and giving her this award today, and thank you for giving me the opportunity.
There is a microphone. You might start singing.
No. Mick usually doesn't let me speak in public, so I'm not prepared for this. I'm sometimes not even allowed to wear Calvin Coolidge shirt. I wear like decoy shirts if I'm out in the public, because it makes me sure. But I, it's really the staff. I've got a great support from everybody, from Mick and every teacher. We're just, we work well as a group, and they're willing to help, and Dr. Bell and Trish O'Shaughnessy, they're always bringing us opportunities, and I thank you for that because the kids really, they don't know what's out there, and once they find out, they really want to do it. So just that exposure to as many opportunities as we can, and that's my goal. So I thank you for all your help and support, too.
My favorite day was, nobody recognized him because he was in a jumpsuit. And he was like, it's like, he was like in a workout suit, so the kids were like, oh, it's Dr. Bell. And I'm like, they didn't recognize him without the bow tie, but he's great. He was there with me all the time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Craighead. And you know I'm a little elongated in what I say, but I'll just simply say, but for you, we would have had lower numbers. So keep doing what you're doing, okay? Good job. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Thanks, everybody. President Adler.
Thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda, we have some district presentations. Calvin Coolidge Staff, do you want to all stand up and take a little bout? No?
I want to say.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
Julie, I want to, hi. I'll say thank you for always looking out for Bryson. Anytime you saw me, you would always tell me, buddy.
Thank you, Julie, and Mr. Adler. I've been to Bradley many, many times, and you were always there with the kids, smiling. That was an easy choice for us. We appreciate you so much. Yep. Are these her parents? Hey, Julie? Ms. Craighead, is that mom and dad?
Good job. Congratulations.
Next up, we have district presentations. First one up, Marcia Bolden, Executive Director from Alignment Peoria.
And good evening, and thank you, Board President Adler, Dr. Karat, and good evening to all of our board members tonight. I am elated to be here today just to share a couple of dates regarding Alignment Peoria. For some of you, if it's new, we are a non-for-profit organization. We exist solely to bring together diverse community resources in support of Peoria Public Schools. And so since 2016, we've been on this journey, Alignment Peoria journey. I'd like to bring your attention to the right side just to highlight our long-term objectives and priorities there. Out of the five, we really have paid very close, we've been very intentional about focusing on increasing graduation rates, college readiness, career readiness, and student health. And to date, we have five alignment teams that are actually moving, they're meeting and working across a broad spectrum. We have over, as of today, we have over 120 participating organizations, and that deserves a round of applause. That's amazing. That is amazing, and what that really means is you have had organizations, corporations that have signed on to say, we want to be a part of this organization and we want to help. And so what that also equates to is we have 229 volunteers that are actually registered, and they represent a very cross-representation of professionals and community members. So to bring you, let me go right back real quick here, just to go back to our different tactics. We have formed two tactics. One is called college and career readiness, and we just kind of married the two. The second one is student health team. And so tonight, I really want to emphasize the work that's being done in the college and career readiness action team, and that is spearheaded by our very own Tom Welsh and Clint Drury. And so I like to say that they're the experts, but I will do his project justice tonight. We have, back in June, there was a series of meetings which involved probably about 50 community members, and that was a representation of educators and business professionals. They came together over two days to develop a very comprehensive career awareness framework. And what was exciting about that was, for one, they wanted to come up with common language. They also wanted to talk about what were those essential skills that employers look for in employees in various disciplines. And so within the disciplines, they identified 12 career clusters, and that, I'm sorry, that is also aligned to national standards. And so out of this two-day wonderful discussion evolved our K5 Career Awareness Pilot. And just to pause, this pilot will also launch in the fall, the other half, which will be our sixth through eighth. But in July, July 10th, we launched the ITP, which is Invitation to Participate, again requesting business professionals to sign on, which will allow students in grades K through five to have up to two professionals come into their class and to really talk about what it takes to be in the career that they're representing, to really draw the connections between school and the world of work, to really to talk about their passion and why it is that they do what they do. And so this particular pilot, the impact alone, we will begin 277 classrooms, and we're looking for approximately 134 volunteers. We're halfway there. I just put out a call to Action Today requesting, we need about 60 more volunteers, and so I know some of the board members tonight are already registered, they have responded. But I do want to challenge everyone under the sound of my voice, if you have not responded and registered to this, to this opportunity, I really want to encourage you to do so. It's a fairly easy process, and I'll talk about that briefly. But this pilot alone is scheduled to impact 6,000 students, and so that is truly exciting. I've had an opportunity to interface with various community stakeholders, our business community especially, they are elated, they're excited because this is an opportunity for them to be in the classroom and to really highlight some of the wonderful things that they're doing as professions. I also want to give tremendous kudos to Susan Gershnhage, Patricia O'Shaughnessy, Lynn Anderson-Loy, Cheryl St. Philip, and Dr. Simpson. They have been amazing in really working with various stakeholders and partners to really plan this framework and get it underway. All right, I'm gonna see if I can go to the portal here. And maybe not. I was gonna just try to show them when they respond. Okay. When you go to our website, and it is www, thank you, here we are right here, it's fairly simple, you just click on the Respond to Participate. It will take you to this page, and from there, there's a questionnaire that you will fill out. It takes approximately 24 to 48 hours for you to receive a temporary password, which will then allow you to have registered and to go back to respond to the ITP. We are looking forward to going live with this project September the 10th. And so that concludes my update. It's a wonderful, wonderful time to be in the world of alignment. We're truly having a wonderful time just meeting various community folks, and just to hear that they're excited to be a part of something bigger and to impact our students. I thank you for your time tonight. I'll open up if there are any questions at this time.
Any questions from board members? Marcia, I actually had just one small question.
Sure.
Are there any sectors of the workforce that you haven't gotten good representation from yet? That way, if we know people, that we could encourage them to respond?
Sure. One that comes to top of mind is agriculture. We can use some assistance there. And I'll be sending out a report. We're going to go over that information with our team, and I'll work with Tom to make sure we share that with everyone. Is that okay? All right. Thank you, and again. Thank you. And again, please respond if you have not already.
Thank you. Next up is the Competency-Based Learning Pilot. We have Susan Gershnhage and Tom Welsh.
Good evening, Board President Adler, Dr. Karat, and members of the Board of Education. Tonight, Susan and I were asked to give a brief update of competency-based learning. If you recall, we were here and gave a very formalized presentation back in January. We would like to update you with what's going on since we last visited. If you recall, 2017, we were one of 10 school districts in the state of Illinois that applied and were granted the competency-based learning grant, which allowed us to submit waivers, waivers based on attendance, waivers based on non-traditional experiences, to grant competency credits to students towards their high school diploma. And just as a review, we talked in January about four features, four main features of competency-based learning. We talked about earning credit towards graduation in ways other than traditional coursework, in places other than traditional classrooms. Several examples come to mind, most notably the CHIP, which we now refer to as E for Life. A second competency we feature that we note all the time is incorporating real-world knowledge and challenges. And we try to incorporate it into our existing curriculum. We currently, recently rather, partnered with the Illinois Science and Technology Institute with Mr. Will Smith at Richwoods High School in his marketing class. And we're going to get some real-world practicum in, with Caterpillar. It's very exciting work, and we look forward to reporting back on that at Richwoods very soon. The third feature is using knowledge frameworks and progressions to support learner growth. When Susan takes the podium, she'll talk to you about a process called DAICOM, where those actual frameworks are created sequentially. And then the fourth is attaining career-related competencies beyond those needed for high school graduations. So many of our students who are engaged in competency-based learning are getting experiences much richer, much broader into typically career-related fields and aspirations. So when we take a look at last year's successes, the two first that come to mind are the Options Program at Peoria High, in the Options Program at Manual Academy. At Peoria High, there are 17 students who were off track to graduate with their senior class graduated. The work done at Peoria North in the Peoria High team is amazing. They were joined shortly, I would say within about a two-week period, by Manual Academy. And Manual Academy, although they don't have the same size, they were also able to graduate 11 seniors last year that, again, were off track for graduation if it wasn't for this intervention, which is all competency-based. And then I made mention earlier of our E for Life program, also referred to as CHIP initially. We had seven students graduate the program, of which four of those students are currently employed by Caterpillar. And the success of that program is amazing. The other students went on to other aspects. Some went to college, some went to various other places. But to have four students of the seven is amazing. It truly, truly is amazing. And then finally, the example from the summer is in our health field. We had five students who had internships at OSF, five students at the Peoria Health Department, and another two students at Unity Point, who all worked this summer and earned competency-based credit throughout the summer. So we also have a steering committee that we work with in addition to Dr. Karat, Susan, myself, Tom Simpson, Cheryl St. Philip, Beth Kreider has given us amazing support, as well as Sonia Miles and Greg Tomlin from Caterpillar. So the work has been very, very rewarding. We're very excited about what we've accomplished and in the future as well, which Susan will get into at this time.
So while I'm here, I'm going to recognize Mr. Atkins Dutroux, who's part of the POPS program and fell in love with it, right Jeff? So just so exciting for kids. And that's the idea behind competency-based is, a student takes the amount of time that they need to do their learning to accomplish their goals. So that's a great example. So you might say on the steering committee, well, where's the teachers? The teachers are part of the work projects. And so one of the first things that we did just in August was to work on our teacher pathway internships. And this is for high school students that want to be teachers. And so we had a group of teachers come together, and they developed the competencies needed for when students go out, and they do a pre-student teaching experience. And so that was a great opportunity for them to kind of evaluate, okay, what would we expect a high school student to be able to do versus a novice teacher or a novice student teacher or a regular student teacher. We have roughly 39 students who are enrolled in that. And I did happen to look at our career cruising, and we have over 100 students interested in the teacher pathway. And so I think that's really exciting for the district. We also have a program at Midstate College where we have seven students that will be working on billing and program, billing and coding programs. And they're going to do that in the mornings, and then they return to high school in the afternoons. In the spring, we're going to have construction internships. And in some cases, we build the competencies. And in some cases, the competencies might already be a natural occurrence because of the internship. So what we will do is take a look at the construction situation of what the students are going to do in their internship. And if they need competencies built, we will build those. If not, we'll adopt what would be expected for the internships. The E for Life, Tom mentioned that. We did a kickoff, what, week before last, Tom, where we had the students come in. And the students spent a couple of days on essential skills, essential employability skills. And that's how to function in the workplace as a good employee. And so we're going to be doing that with each of our internship students before they go out into the world of work, and just to prepare them so they know what the expectations are along the way. So let's see, we developed manufacturing competencies last spring before the students did the Caterpillar internship. And so that was where we first learned about the DAICOM process. DAICOM stands for Developing a Curriculum. And a couple of us went to a very long and intensive training that we were very excited when we got back about how to run a competency-based curriculum and development. And that's really where you focus on a job and not so much like the learning standards that students would normally do. So you focus on an actual job. And so I think that covers it. Other than, I think that we're only hampered by our imagination when it comes to how we focus on competency-based learning. And so I always encourage the teachers, too, to think about ways to customize learning for students. And so I think it's all pretty exciting. And we're now part of 20 schools, and we're learning from them as we go.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from board members? Mr. Walter?
Yeah. How many students totally do you have involved in the competency base, and how do you recruit them?
So we'd have to do some fast math here.
I can get back with the total number of students. I hate to guest them at this point. Because we just opened, we just opened new opportunities a couple of weeks ago in the fields of construction, where last year in work-based learning, we had, I think, six kids in construction. We have 25. We've expanded the hair braiding experience at Woodruff with Lacey Simmons as well, to add a second year, which is really going to focus on business and entrepreneurship and just other opportunities. So we're always looking. And it even gets to the granular level of a student who, for example, we had a senior last year who we learned out was dancing 40 hours a week in the Peoria Ballet. Now, that student should be awarded a competency credit. Is it really, you know, and that would free up a period that he was taking PE, he was definitely getting the exercise and the activity was there. So there's lots of examples. I think Susan mentioned, you're only limited by your imagination. There are a lot of things that our students are doing, Eagle Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, that they're active in the community. And if we can find a way to link it to what we're trying to accomplish for our students, that's our mission. That's our challenge.
Yep. So this is, you're hearing some of the work from the innovation team. And Susan is a director of that. And a lot of that has to do with the work that Mr. Welch is doing at the high school level. But we've just begun exploring a redefining ready. I mean, we're really serious about this movement. And you'll be hearing a lot more of, we have a lot of other initiatives that we'll be presenting to you pretty soon. For us, we're serious about preparing kids to have productive and prosperous lives. And I, you know, we take this thing seriously from Harvard Report, where it talks about, you know, the current system that we have, it is, it's broken and it needs to be done differently. And so I'm excited about the work that we're doing around helping kids to find their passion and their interests, and placing them in those environments and providing options for them. I did want to give Mr. Atkins Dutroux kudos for being part of the POPS program and helping students get on track. And also, Mr. Welch...
He saw the vision early.
Yep. Mr. Welch, you mentioned the real-world, real-world experience, and you mentioned Will Smith. Was that the connection Mr. Adler had given us also with Caterpillar? Was that the I? Can you mention that a little bit, please?
Right. Yep. That's the Illinois Science and Technology Institute. And currently, they are engaged with probably 30 to 40 businesses across the state, including Caterpillar, where students, where they're going to a class, and it will be integrated, it'll be project-based, where Caterpillar, in this case at Richwoods, will come in with a real-world Caterpillar issue. They'll work in teams to solve that issue. The next step after they do their research, after they, they'll have mentors from Caterpillar, they'll do research, then they'll make a presentation. And that presentation has a competitive component as well, where they'll be given the opportunities, those that are Excel here in central Illinois, to compete with schools from the Chicago area. So it, it's, we're just on the cusp of it. We have Will's going to training, I think, later this week. I'll be anxious to hear what he comes back with. But it's a great example of real-world problems and engagement. Students see meaning in our curriculum. And that's really the magic right there.
Stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Josh Collins, Director of Transportation, and Carla Eamon here to give you a quick update on the Transportation Boundaries Efficiency Improvement Committee. The agenda tonight will be just a quick review by myself of the budget, how it's changed over time, and how we've seen improvements. And then Josh will cover kind of where we've been and what made those changes possible. And then finally, together, we'll talk about what we want to explore during the 1819 school year. So we started off, we had that overall budget deficit of the 4.3 million, and we saw that 1.4 million was transportation. And that's the area that we really wanted to tackle and get that under control. So over this really relatively short time, we've taken on several initiatives, and we really have seen a huge improvement in that area. But what we have to keep in mind is that what we want to do beyond just coming up with a balanced budget is we need to end up in the black because we have aging fleet of buses, and we have other areas that we need to be able to spend within that area. So we want to get this more in the black than just still slightly in the red. So we still have more work to do, but we have made a lot of improvement. And Josh will now cover some of the areas that we've improved in.
All right. Good evening. Basically, going back to the reconfiguration, that was really Phase 1 that occurred a couple of school years ago. What's really, I'm going to touch on just a few things that really kind of led to the 1.2 million reduction in spending. From the Phase 1, the removal of the annex area, that was very beneficial as far as reducing that spending deficit. The discontinuation of the school choice program, eliminating transport to most ineligible students. We went through and updated our hazard boundaries to make sure those were updated with the state to maximize our reimbursements. And then the alteration of the Lincoln and Glen Oak boundaries during Phase 1. During Phase 2, the biggest contribution was we reworked high school and Woodruff and really matched the Woodruff schedule to the high school schedules. And that allowed for a lot more efficiencies for us of transporting those students to and from Woodruff. And then also with Phase 2, some additional things that we have done as a department was reduced monitor usage to only reimbursable routes. We've moved several programs where we were not getting any kind of revenue back. We've moved those to grant-funded revenue streams. The lunch routes, which were being run from the Transportation Department, are now being run from Food Services, again altering the vocational transport. An opt-out option was created during the student registration. I've got some data on that. We have about 700, it was about 720-ish students who were eligible for transport who opted out. And that allows us to plan more efficient routes. We streamlined high school, middle school routes, primarily to the high school, pulling those out of neighborhoods, reducing mileage. The end result for last year, we reduced routes down to 94 routes.
Okay. These are some areas that we want to explore during the 1819 year. We broke it into two groups, school-based and program-based. For school-based, we're looking at wanting to, what we call fix the boot. And that is an area that goes into the Roosevelt, what should be the Roosevelt area, where students are going to another school. We're trying to, I guess, get the boundaries to be even, to make sense around that neighborhood. So that's one area that we wanted to work on. We plan to just engage administrators in that process, and then engage the public. And another area within that school-based is to end transport for choice and annex for FY '20. That's another area, again, that we're exploring. These aren't, you know, final decisions. These are areas of exploration. And then for program-based, we're kind of excited about looking, using our software that we've purchased, to really take a deeper dive into the special education services, what we've heard from parents over time, that they want to see more consistency, they want to see less travel time, and by consistency, not jumping from school to school to obtain their services. And so we want to look at a way to kind of rezone, maybe you'd call it, the school district in order to better serve the special population. And that is something that's going to take a lot of time, working with the special ed director and coordinators. And this is going to be a subgroup of the transportation group to take this deeper dive. And then we will be bringing it back to the regular committee. Okay, so for a project timeline, so far, we've had our organizational meeting, and then we have had our first of the special ed subcommittee meetings, where we were able to break down some areas. Josh really kind of walked us through some of the different ideas. And then we were able to bounce it off of the special ed staff. And it was a good experience, and we found that it's going to take several more of those meetings. And they need to be longer meetings than some of our one, one-and-a-half-hour meetings to really dive in and get the information back out that we need. We're looking at, in September then, continuing these meetings and then also combining for the larger group to talk about that boot area. And then that kind of October, November time, it's continuing to work on identifying that impact on the special ed changes and boundary changes, if that would require any. And then start work on those students that may be impacted for ending the transportation choice for the annexed area. Is that, as I think Josh has pointed out, it goes down to very few students nearing the end of that time period. And then into December, the idea is to first share with Cabinet what we come up with as a committee. And then it would move out to the building principals and PTO groups. We would be sharing with the board throughout this time. So this is just kind of the timeline, knowing that in any of these cases, year to year, we need to have any decision or changes that we recommend to the board by the end of February in order to communicate out to impacted families. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Shaw?
The boot, can you give me the background on the, the origin of that, where that come from?
That's what we refer to as an area within the Roosevelt attendance area. I handed out a map to kind of elaborate... out a map to kind of elaborate what we're talking about. So we've kind of given it the nickname in transportation of the boot. It literally is a bite that is taken out of what should logically be the Roosevelt attendance area by other schools. The reason why it was done is before, before I've worked for the district. However, when speaking with other people, it was an attempt, I believe, to alleviate some overcrowding that was occurring at Roosevelt at the time. And then subsequently, what we call the triangle, was an attempt then to put some students back into Roosevelt, I believe is what that's for. So we just, we're looking at this area because it stands out. When you look at all of the attendance areas for the school, it stands out as something that's worth discussing.
Yep. And all of the recommendations will come to the superintendent before he comes to the board, so it doesn't just, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
First of all, I'm going to go back and when we talked about Roosevelt particularly, you talk about transportation for choice and annex. What are you, what are you really saying when you talk about eliminating transportation for choice in that area? Are we, am I wrong? Are we not, is it not building toward Magnet School, Roosevelt?
Oh, no, that's not, I'm sorry. No, that's, that's not what we're referring to. That was a separate piece. It's not part of transporting for the Magnet School. This had to do with that, the area or areas where we were transporting across the city, for example, up to Northmore, students that really should be at Roosevelt then as we transition out, that we're getting to a point where it's so few students that are left that we feel that we want to look at, wouldn't they transition? Because this is a group of Roosevelt students, that that's where they will end up, that perhaps they could just go back a year earlier and that that would be an option to save money.
You and I have been here long enough to really remember. Why were they, why were they being transported in the beginning?
To, what do you want to say? Yeah, to offer a fair education when we-
Since we have no child left behind anymore, we don't have to worry about whether the child is getting an adequate education.
Yeah, it's a matter too, the parents could choose if they would want to have their children transported up there as part of NCLB, yes.
Any other question you have is, when we talk about special ed students and trying to get them in the area where, you know, they live, do we get reimbursement for transportation with special ed students?
We get some. Let Josh explain that.
Yes, we do. In fact, special needs transportation reimbursement is at a better rate than regular division. So yes, we do. We do get-
I thought we did. And, you know, of course, you know, I keep saying, I go back to when transportation was totally in the black and, and we were moving money out of transportation into education, you know, and those kinds of things. And that's probably why we stayed in the red for a while. But I don't know why we would even think about the special ed students. Would we lose that money if they're in the home school where they won't need transportation?
Well, what we're looking at is, we're looking at addressing some of the parent concerns, which was stability, making sure that they're, so they're not bouncing from building to building, that they're within the grade level for the building. These are all ideas that are being thrown out. Right now, what we're doing is trying to approach it from a stability standpoint, stability for those students. If we can come up with a plan or program surrounding special needs that gives us that stability that parents were asking for, can we in turn gain efficiencies by doing that rather than placing students simply where there's room?
Okay, so where did you get, I mean, you did a survey with parents and they came up with these, these concerns?
This goes all the way back to a couple of the coffees with the superintendent. There were parents that came and expressed that they don't understand why their students are treated differently and why are there situations where it's K one and then two-three and then four and then five-six over in another building, that why couldn't their students go through and be in a K four situation and five-eight with the regular education students? And so, not an official survey, but that is what we hear. It's been maybe only at a couple of board meetings, but also at other situations that we've been to, when you do a PTO meeting that you get that feedback. And we thought, well, this might just be an opportunity, it's to do both, that we could cut down on the routes and the amount of time on the routes. It's going to help the families, the children, that probably the students that really do need to be closest to home and not spending a lot of time on a school bus. If there was a way to make it more efficient, that that would be serving them better.
I was wondering about that because I know that we didn't have that many parents that were concerned. And in addition to that, don't we have to transport special ed students, whether they're within a mile and a half or not?
Right. That's just, if we can minimize that, it would be best for both the district and for the student. That's the way we were looking at it.
Yep. And it's a little tricky. I remember when I started at Whittier as a principal, we had the autistic program, we had the younger ones at Whittier, and then there was a group at Sterling, and then there was a group at Peoria, at maybe Richwoods. I don't even remember. It's been quite a bit, a while ago. Because, I mean, you don't have enough for every neighborhood to be able to house and accommodate. So they had to be placed and sort of consolidate. So that's some of what we're thinking. And for like, when I first started, autistic was at Glen Oak, and remember that? And so I think that's where we got some feedback from some parents. And we were, we were over capacity, you know, over capacity there. And so then we moved them to Treewind. And so that's, it's that group that it's not enough to house its own neighborhood, like the Peoria region doesn't have and the Ridgewood doesn't have its own. And so they have to sort of be consolidated. And sometimes they get booted out if a building is blossoming, for example. So those are some of the challenges that we have to take a look at in addition to other indicators and other, other pieces. So it's not just, okay, you stay here or you stay there. But it's looking at the whole, the whole situation and then making a decision based on, on the data.
I just want us to be sure that we're looking at what's best for the child and not what's best for everything else. Because that, the service that we were providing was, you know, as for special ed, was basically based in the fact that was a need base. So I want us to continue to think about that. I mean, at some point, there were so many kids in special ed that, you know, we actually got cited by the state for having too many kids in special ed. So if that's still the case, we don't want to just have everybody piled up together. And they could have a better service on the ground.
Okay, so we'll probably see a milestone update later in the year?
Yes.
Your thinking? Okay. Yeah, Mr. Wilson?
I was just curious, was there an estimated amount of savings from the proposed changes for the eighteen-nineteen that were displayed?
I don't think we're quite to that point yet because we need to know how, you know, it'll come down to mileage, everything else of how much that'll, it'll change. But we will get back to you real soon on that of what we're looking at there.
Cool. Appreciate it.
Mr. Walter?
I guess this will maybe to Mick. How are we with backup payments for transportation? Has the state caught up with this yet? Are we still behind? Because I knew that was an issue before.
Is he awake?
Transportation papers. Are they even charged at this point?
So we got our fourth payment.
Yeah, I think-
Okay.
And they're still procreated in like, you know, the regular generation compared to last year.
Okay.
I mean, if we've got the fourth payment on last year, that's as current as we can expect to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is just August.
Yeah. And I really actually appreciate your question, Ms. Ross, in terms of definitely. And I think you know how I feel. We're not going to try to balance a budget on the backs of our kids, for sure. So that's why the committee does its due diligence. And then I have them running through a variety of committees, including Cabinet. And then it comes to me. And if it, when it comes to you, then it says, I've gotten my stamp of approval. Now you guys could kind of take a look at it and provide feedback. So, yeah, we appreciate the feedback. And we, we're working very, very hard to do what's in the best interest of kids, always. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I notice we have a Boy Scout troop in the House tonight. Are you guys here as part of a requirement for attending a civic meeting? I was in exactly that chair like twenty years ago. Thank you for being here. So at this point in our agenda, we're at audience presentations. As a public body making decisions that impact over thirteen thousand students and tens of thousands of voters and taxpayers, feedback from the public is critical to our success. Rules for addressing our board have been posted near the public comment box as well as on our website, www.purepublicschools.org. We welcome both your praise and your constructive criticism. We simply request that you maintain a civil tone to your comments and respect our other speakers by limiting your time to the allotted five minutes. Outside of these meetings, board members can be contacted by district emails. And if you have a specific request here tonight, please indicate so in your comments and we'll have a staff member follow up with you after the meeting. Our first speaker is Ms. Sharon Cruz.
In the lawyer-prepared response for my FOIA request about legal issues and fees paid for two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, all specific details were redacted. A two thousand fifteen Chicago Tribune article about reporting legal costs in public schools could easily have been a description of the information I received. The article stated, "Analysis of legal spending was thwarted by claims of attorney-client privilege. Some descriptions were so heavily redacted that the work was described as only research, analysis, or preparation." With regard to attorney-client privilege, who specifically is the client? When the school board or the district, not a person, is the client, why is attorney confidentiality required? What is the public's right to know? The Tribune article states that school superintendents maintain that legal spending helps avoid costly lawsuits, aids in contract negotiations, and ensures compliance with laws. If these are Peoria's main reasons for hiring attorneys, the redaction of details seems unnecessary because these cases are reported in the Peoria Journal. However, the article points out what I believe to be true about this district also, that money is spent liberally on attorneys who gave general legal advice on everything from reviewing a copy machine lease to assessing open records requests, and that district administrators pay attorneys for phone conversations and responses to email questions. Which administrators have the right to contact lawyers for legal advice and/or action? And who gives them permission to engage lawyers and therefore has the right to authorize money spent on legal fees? To what extent can the board limit contacting lawyers and for what reasons? The total spent on legal fees for almost two years, from July two thousand sixteen through May two thousand eighteen, was about nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, almost one million dollars from the education fund. For two thousand sixteen-seventeen, lawyers were paid seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty-eight for travel expenses to and from Peoria. That, I believe, is a travesty. There were no travel expenses listed for two thousand seventeen-eighteen. I have to ask, was a decision made not to pay travel expenses? Or is it possible that I just didn't receive that information? Lawyers handled three hundred and forty-five issues categorized into fifty-three very nebulous topics over a twenty-three-month period. That is an average of one hundred and twenty-three issues a month. Doesn't that seem excessive? I assume that all the administrators on Wisconsin Avenue have administrative degrees and that most of those degrees include courses in school law. Why shouldn't these high-paid employees be qualified to deal with many of these issues? One hundred and seventeen thousand dollars was spent on seventeen issues related to personnel matters, negotiations, and grievances. My guess is that this legal advice favored the administration, not the teachers and other employees. I am curious about the seven hundred and eighty-five dollars spent on five instances of issues labeled as SBE complaints, which appears to refer to Eisenhower and was the only detail mentioned. About three hundred and forty thousand dollars was spent on seventy issues related to public, Peoria Public Schools. Wow, that's informative. About thirty-six thousand was spent on fifteen investigations, forty-nine thousand on nine lawsuits, one hundred and thirty-three thousand on sixteen issues related to students, thirty-five thousand six hundred and forty-four on twenty-two special ed issues. Twenty-seven six thousand six hundred and forty-two was spent on thirty issues that had no title at all, obviously top secret. Other, there were fifty-three other topics. Please consider the possibility that this money is not being spent wisely. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Jeff Atkins Dutrow.
Thank you, Jeff Atkins Dutrow, President of the Peoria Federation of Teachers. Excuse me. Late today, I received a formal letter from Von Steuben regarding concerns about mold. There was some limited testing down at the school. Teachers, though, were asking for testing in other areas of the building. And they sent me photos from those areas and they are definitely concerning. There's something looks like red dust from Mars on the fans. You know, and I should say too, that any time I've brought an issue to board members, the majority of you have been there the very next day to check things out. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and how much that means to our members. I have a few questions. With the HR report, we're trying to figure out, what does pending paperwork mean? I don't think the published version has that, but the one that is sent electronically does. What are, why are the effective dates one or two weeks back for certified teacher positions? And I've had some concerns come to me and have to ask, do we have or have we had certified teachers teaching as teachers prior to being officially hired by the Board of Education? I have a question with regards to discipline. And essentially, what I'd like to know, what are the expectations of the school board, not the administration, with regards to school and classroom discipline? So you walk into a classroom, what do you expect to see as a board member? And where are we now with regards to where you expect us to be as far as discipline is concerned? For social-emotional learning, it would be helpful if someone on the board could articulate for the board what SEL to you is, your concept of it, and what should it look like in a school or in a classroom? So if you walk into a school, what does SEL look like? If you walk into a classroom, what does SEL look like? What is it? Can we articulate it? We'll be doing some in-depth research regarding these issues and your answers to those questions would be helpful for us. I should mention too, that the AFT has been investing hundreds of thousands of dollars into not only career pathways, but also alternatives to suspension and expulsion. And they've been doing this for years, right here in Peoria Public Schools. Unfortunately, two of the programs were shut down, but investments were made so that teachers could be trained on restorative justice, social-emotional learning, trauma-based education, et cetera. So when I ask, what do you think SEL is or what concept do you have of it, I'm not asking you to explain it to me because I already know what my concept of it is. asking you to explain it to me because I already know what my concept of it is. Hopefully, that makes sense. The POPS program that was mentioned earlier, I love going to work every day. It is a legitimate alternative for students who are not on track to graduate. The students who make it out of that, I feel confident that they are high school graduates. And I think a big reason it's successful is because it's an opt-in program. So students aren't forced to go over to POPS, right? They have to opt into it. Look, there's no problem, no way you're going to graduate within the next one, two, or three years. However, check out this program, and if you and your parents are all about this, sign up. You can go through the program and possibly graduate on time with your classmates and get all kinds of skills and be community and job-ready, college-ready, when you do so. And probably, you know, 30, maybe even up to 50% of our students need these different kinds of programs. When we try to cram students into schools, you know, and do everything the traditional way, it makes things worse than if we kind of step back and spread out. And I know the students in our program, it's quiet, they're spread out, they're not crowded, they can decompress, they can use the kitchen, they're treated as adults, so, and I'm not bragging about anything I'm doing, I'm just bragging about the program in general. I would like to say too, with regards to Pam Adams, I know she left already, but I learned a lot from having hours-long discussions with her off the record, and she always got annoyed when I'd say, "Is this off the record?" But the discussions I would have with her would enlighten me and would allow me to see things in different ways. So I appreciate that from her, from over the past over years. And Ms. Craighead, I would like to say, my own kids love her and the STEM programs, and she is phenomenal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Ternan.
I'm here this evening to talk to you as a past teacher union president and teacher of 38 years, trained by the IFT and the AFT, spending several weeks in Washington DC in 10 years, and Chicago as Mr. Dutrow does regularly, being taught the principles of legal, because we represent the teachers' union as lawyers, basically. When we're at the table for negotiations, we are the lawyers. We don't pay lawyers to come to the table. Your legal bill this year will be much higher because you just had bargaining with the teachers, believe me. I think it's very important for you to understand how important your contract is. When you settle a contract, it keeps you out of court, because the first thing the judges ask you if you try to go to court is, are you going through the contract first? Have you filed a grievance? Have you gone to arbitration? Have you gone to the labor judge? And the labor judge, if you don't have a contract, if you got the wonderful two-page contract of Quest, you have to go to court all the time, because there is no contract. So you go to the court. Last week, they were in court, they've been in court all summer, okay? One was canceled and so forth. I would like to know, how much of your $5.2 million that you gave Quest last year was spent on attorneys the last several weeks? I would like to know, I mean, I heard they were brutalized last Tuesday in court. They looked like fools in front of the judge, from what I was told. I wasn't there. I'm going to be there tomorrow because they're going to finish up Cindy Artis's case, that's Mayor Artis's sister, tomorrow after she went to court on Tuesday and couldn't get through the court session, and both the attorneys, I'm sure, were making pretty good money. I think it's ridiculous that they got a two-page contract, and the judge can't even say, "Why don't you go through the grievance procedure, or why don't you go to the labor judge?" I think it's just outlandish. But when I know the people involved, when their board was formed, Rob Parks, for example, was in charge of the chamber way back when I was in the chamber as a teacher, you remember? And I asked her three years in a row to put a teacher on the education committee. The chamber refused, and finally, we just dropped out of the chamber, because they're not interested in teachers at all. They're interested in running a business. When they got Quest, they became a business. They hired business people. You know, in this case, Ms. Wood, you know, what she has done over there, and now she's spending three days of your time, you know, on your payroll, I want to know as a taxpayer, who's paying her to be in court when she's supposed to be here working? I don't get that. You know, so that's just me, but I, you know, I believe that. So anyway, going on, court cases are things that just destroy teacher relationships. Teachers sit here, you know, when Ms. Wood was at Northmore Edison, she let two teachers go. An art teacher and a PE teacher, she saved Edison, not the district, she saved Edison $60,000, and she got a $5,000 bonus. The kids got double the size in PE and double the size in art classes, because all of a sudden, they went from two teachers for PE and two teachers from art to one. So the class size is doubled. It was not an educational decision, it was a money decision. It was a corporation decision that Chris Whittle walked out of this town with, it cost you $42 million for Edison, $17 million directly to the company and another $25 million to run the schools over what you had run before because they had extra hours and extra days in the summertime. You need to look at the Quest situation. You need to look at your attorneys that are charging you to come from Chicago down here. I don't get what you're doing. You can save a quarter of a million dollars a year if you grab a hold of your situation with attorneys. You can save $6 million a year coming up this year, because it's going to go to about $6 million a year, by getting rid of Quest. Quest is not successful. It had no calculus teacher, it had no STEM program as far as technology, they didn't even have a technology person. I told you this before when I went through there. They had no advanced placement classes, none. You know, these kids have left and gone to Central. One girl told me she went to Central as a junior, left Quest, and when she became the number three student at Central, she graduated, she said she left Quest because it was like going to grade school over again. And with that, I'll leave you to think about legal fees, but you need to get control of it.
All right, thank you. Are there any response to audience presentations? Dr. Kret, do you have any response?
Thank you, President Adler. Legal fees, I would say, we've done a really nice job since I've been here. We've gotten it down, and I think you've seen the evidence, haven't you? Where they're down significantly. I mean, in terms of lawsuits, those have been very, very, I mean, compared to what we've had in the past, it's, we're moving in the right direction, and I'm really proud of the savings for the district, and I'm talking about lots of money. And I don't think they're being paid, Doc, Dr. Ica, they're being paid to travel?
No, they're not.
They're not being paid to travel, so that, I think we've talked about that before. Let me see.
The applications are free.
Pardon me? Right, we have the retainer, so we can ask tons of questions, unlimited questions, for $900 a month retainer fee, and, yep, and it's only a few individuals who can have contact with, so we have a system in place and protocols in place. I'm surprised, Jeff, but that's okay. I mean, Jeff has to do what Jeff has to do. The mold, we're handling that, you took care of that. Where are we with that? Davis, go ahead.
As soon as it was brought to our attention, we mobilized the buildings and grounds department. They showed up then the same day and did their own inspection. Agua has hired an outside engineering firm that specializes in mold inspection. They came and conducted a staged testing, and the result came back normal. So, of course, I sent that result to Mr. Atkins-Dutrow, and I believe he's challenging it, I guess.
Yep. So, you know, I, as superintendent of Peoria Public Schools, the one thing I do not play games. I take my job very seriously. When people complain about anything that's threatening, like mold, we are on it, and we will never put anybody's health at stake, number one. And number two, in terms of SEL, it's amazing the work that we're doing around SEL. And for me, I would encourage the public to come into classrooms, board members to come into classrooms, and hopefully, what you will see is, from Jeff's side and the teachers' union, engaging classes that are relevant and meaningful, because there is a correlation, right? So that's my response, Mr. Adler.
Okay, thank you. I think Ms. Cruz had specifically asked, I think, about, didn't see travel expenses in 2017-18, but had seen them in 2016-17. I'm pretty sure that was the effective date of our new contract with H. Flark, in which we carved out that piece. Any other? Yeah, and Fraser lives here.
Yes, they have an office in.
That's what she just said. They know that already.
Any other responses? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right along. Got some information items, proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions for Mr. Wilson? Okay. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests.
Thank you, President Adler. Since our board meeting on August 13th, we've received two new requests. There was one pending noted on August 13th. We have received 34 requests for the calendar year for a cost of $350.
Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Consent agenda is as follows. Item number one, gifts to the school district. This meeting, $200 a year to date, $3,270. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item number four, human resources report. Item number five, Richwoods High School girls tennis team, field trip approval to Edwardsville. Item number six, field trip approval, Richwoods High School boys golf team, trip to Champaign, Illinois. Item number seven, the adolescent drug and alcohol prevention and treatment program. Item number eight, approval for sale of surplus property as amended, amended to say highest bidder instead of lowest bidder. And item number nine, Go Solutions Medicaid vendor, and that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like polled for a separate vote? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the entire consent agenda.
Second.
Item has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on all those items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Dr. Davidson-Aviles.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Presentations and suggestions by board members. We got all of them. Full consent. Okay, I'll just piggyback off of public comment period. I would encourage all of us, board members, go out and visit some schools. I didn't want to suggest it too early, because there's a lot of, you know, getting the routine going and a lot of things happening at the beginning of school, but now, as we're kind of arcing towards Labor Day, I think great, great time to go out, build perspective, you know, you know, and bring that back here to our horseshoe. So, any reports from board committees?
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Wilson and I are co-chairs of the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee, and of course, we had our first meeting, initial meeting, and we have another one coming up. Great group, I think, but Mr. Wilson and I have already agreed that we were going to be visiting schools to look at a couple of different things, and so, we're ahead of you on that one.
Good to hear.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Wilson?
Not at this time.
Any other reports from board committees?
The.
Okay, I was just giving you the next date for the policy committee, that is September 20th at 3:30 PM. That is a Wednesday, I believe. Did you have anything to add?
Just that we're, the policy committee, there was a suggestion that came, I believe, from the administration, but we thought it was a good one. We're doing a review of the current policy, and we're doing it from based on which were the items that seemed to be most sensitive that we needed to look at, then go back and review that. Some of these haven't been updated, maybe 20 years in some cases, and others, we need to just take a look at, and so, we're in the process of doing that. So Chairman Shaw has given us homework to do with the committee, so that's where we're at with it right now.
Mrs. Jackson.
The buildings and grounds, Dr. Bob and I are on that committee, and we all know that Dr. Bob is so detailed, he probably has everything we said straight up on his computer, however.
You know what? I was sitting here panicking because I couldn't find the bloody documents. Where is it?
However.
In the interest of it being almost 8 o'clock, and apparently we're ready to break a new record, I would say that the large part of our meeting had to do with the list of projects that are ongoing, related to the facility sales tax, and Dave Myers has those details, and we will be receiving a report from him and his folks, it was great work.
Yes.
And then we saw this totally cool video of a helicopter lifting an AC unit, and I hope we get to see it.
Manual high school, yeah. I hope we get to see it sometime, yeah.
It was on TV.
And we, I didn't see it, so I'd like to see it. We also talked about the sign, and I think we're all very frustrated that the state has kind of got us held up to moving on and so we can get things done at the stadium, but we'll get there. We also discussed some things that I was concerned about, and that is getting in and out of schools that have steps and no railings for our disabled students, parents, people that would come into our school, and looking at all the schools that have steps with nothing to hold on to, or no real good way to get into the buildings. So we're working, we're talking with our maintenance department to really kind of zero in on our buildings, and knowing there are schools that are really weird, like Heinz, that's kind of built on a topography, so it's hard for people with a disability to get in those buildings, but we need to talk about it. So we will, we'll get through that and we'll discuss it later.
And our next meeting is the 20th.
Yes. Of September. At 9 o'clock.
Dr. Kret, something?
President Adler, thank you. Ms. Jackson and Dr. Bob, there was an accident that occurred, speaking of the building committee, that occurred, was that Friday?
Yeah.
Friday night?
Yes.
Right in front of Maud Sanders.
Right.
And so that might be an item that you may want to put on your agenda. We heard from Mr. Adler and I heard, you may have actually heard from the council.
We heard from Chuck Grab.
Yep, and so, and you could probably pull Chief Boone in, and what they would like us to do is sort of identify these hazardous areas and work with the city, whether it's additional traffic support or...
Well, that's a weird intersection, because people are rushing to get on the expressway, so you get traffic, and it's moving pretty fast. I was by there, and I kind of sat there, because I always am in that area, and it's pretty, moving pretty fast getting to that expressway and Glen and those streets that all come together, so.
What concerned me about that school is that parents were, I actually pulled in the center lane one day, because parents were letting kids out in the center lane to walk across the street to the school, because it wasn't anywhere for them, you know, at that point.
Maybe give some recommendations for the city.
But it's a dangerous area, so we need to work with the city and talk about it.
Okay, so we might be able to kick-start that conversation this week yet?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Walter.
In trying to make sure we don't set a new record, I just have a quick comment. Actually, last week, a group of school board members met with Congressman LaHood, and Dr. Kret came to that meeting too, and we had a very interesting discussion, and he he seemed very receptive to the items that federally impact us. And I think we, I think everybody put it pretty much on the table that we needed his support, that we didn't need just lip service, we needed his support, that there's financial proposals from, quite frankly, his party's budget that cuts us back in a number of really critical areas. And I think he was receptive to what we said, you know, we'll see where he comes with it on the votes, but I thought the meeting went fairly well, and so we had, we met with him for about an hour and talked on some things. But as the meeting ended, his assistant gave me his business card because, I said, we were having trouble with IDOT. He says, maybe we can help you with that. So I brought that to give to Mick because there might be some things that they could help us with, with that and stuff with it.
Thanks for the insight. We talked a lot about IDA funds and title funds, not cutting those, and the professional development option for teachers that were slated to be cut. We talked about the need for that, so thank you for being part of that discussion.
Great, thank you. Anything else for the good of the public? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
Mr. Walter.